Yeah.
That's.
There's.
Stuff boxes, but.
But he's going down next week, uh, help the engineers to get, or this week to get some more stuff.
So, good morning. This is the Knox County Board of Commissioners, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. So, we are today going to have our Knox County Transit uh update. And so Bethany, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Um, I have a couple of different things to go over just to update. Um, kind of giving a little bit more of an overview of how we're doing operationally. And then I also included some of our um, our budget. So, we have, we work off of the state fiscal year, so it's kind of the end of the year summary for that. Um, I thought that might be good to enclose and just to kind of refresh on what our expenses are and where our revenue comes from. Um, we'll start off with the, the weekly transit trip counts. So I find um, breaking it down, having a whole month is a little bit of a large um, number. So we, I've decided to break it down into weeks this, this time. And I also wanted to show a little bit of early September. So um, we had about um, we kind of were around fifteen hundred to fourteen hundred trips each week in August. Um, I split out between the on-demand versus the routes and also Kenyon. So you can kind of watch um, from August fourth, the numbers were uh, one thousand two hundred fifteen on-demand riders and two hundred eighty-eight people on the Mount Vernon routes, sixty-six people on Kenyon, and that made one thousand five hundred sixty-nine riders. By the first week of September, um, we had one thousand fourteen on-demand trips, two hundred ninety-eight um, at the Mount Vernon routes, and then one hundred eighty-four with Kenyon. Um, and then that next week, you can see it skyrocket. So it's one thousand one hundred forty on-demand trips, four hundred forty-four, uh, four hundred forty-five riders on the Mount Vernon routes and two hundred eleven on Kenyon. So we jumped um, pretty quickly there. Once back to school hit, uh, we had a total of one thousand seven hundred ninety-six riders that week of September eighth through the twelfth. So um.
Bethany, do you feel like we're slowly changing riding behavior? I mean, obviously, our goal is to ship people to fixed route. Is this, do you think this is a anomaly, or do you think it's actually trending slowly in that direction that we would maintain the Mount Vernon route, the on-demand route?
Right, right. Um, yeah, I would. I think we are, yes. I think it's almost that we're quickly changing, and we're actually getting a lot of new riders and a lot of new ridership with the routes. Um, so I think what we're seeing though is that we have a lot more usage of the routes, but then we're still having the same on-demand demand. Um, so I mean, that's a great question. We are definitely feeling with um, with the fact that we have a smaller budget and we had to cut a few driver positions. So we cut three full-time driver positions. We also cut um, a dispatch position. So we are a little smaller, but we're still trying to meet as much demand as we possibly can. And so in the last few weeks, we have felt the pinch. It's definitely a, a way to put that. Um, we've had a couple of the legacy riders that have been very unhappy because they haven't been able to get the on-demand um, trips. Uh, we do still have that availability on the routes. So it's kind of that most of the riders are happy, you know, and, and they are changing their uh, behaviors. But we do still have some people that are um, just not feeling it with the routes. And the unfortunate part is we just don't have the on-demand availability. So.
Do you think the on-demand rider is uh, how do I say this, of age where the internet and stuff might have surpassed them, therefore they find it hard not to call and get an on-demand ride? Do you think that's a possibility?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, although I would say we do have, we have people from the nursing homes that love the routes. So um, you know, it's really hard to uh, kind of summarize who it is that is fine with it, with the routes um, and doing the deviations or even doing the transfer, you know. So it's designed that people go to the transfer station and then you get out to Walmart. Um, some people don't like that idea of having to ride the two buses. Um, so.
The nice is about getting them used or doing it once or twice and realizing it works.
Yes. When we're trying that too, and just trying like give it a try, um, it's maybe more than once or twice too. It's maybe gonna take a couple of times to do it. Um, so, but in, in the big picture, we're talking about one to two percent of our writers that are not making that transition. But uh, by and large, yes, I feel um, that most of our writers are happy with them, but also we're getting new riders who weren't riding before because they were waiting for those routes.
Are most of those on-demand's called dispatch to call-ins?
Yes, yeah. So they call in. We do have the email option, and we do have a good number of people that email us the request.
Falling.
So yes, some people, they really do like the call-in service, schedule it. Um, you know, the hard thing is, is that people's plans change a lot.
Right.
And um, it always just feels like like the wave that you can't grasp, right? There's just, there's just so much going on and always changing um, that it's hard to plan and it's really hard to nail it down. Um, so that's where I, I think that will always be a challenge for, for transit because people's plans always change. People get sick, they cancel. Um, what, last week when it was, it was raining a lot, we had a lot of cancellations, you know. So it's like, we book, we don't have availability, and then we do have availability, and it's ever-changing. Um, so.
But we did realize that. I mean, this, that's positive because this was our goal.
Mm-hmm.
Was we knew we were gonna make everybody happy, but we knew with everywhere we go, everybody wants more and more and more transportation. And the only way to, to do that is through fixed routes. We, we can't continue on-demand to grow and grow and grow because we, we don't, we're not gonna have the budget, the volume of drivers, the volume of buses to do that. So we, this is, this is the wave of the future. We're gonna have to get more and more on, on fixed routes and take those demands off the system and allow the on-demand to be for the riders that really need on-demand.
Mm-hmm.
When. You're more handicap type riders, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, if you're not in Mount Vernon, you don't have access to the route. So we do a lot of Frederic Town trips, a lot of Apple Valley. I mean, right now, you know, we're very busy in the afternoons. We've got about three different people in the Apple Valley area that want rides around three. We don't have a bus. We just don't have a driver in a bus. Um, or if it's Martinsburg or Centerburg, those kinds of requests. Um, that takes a good forty minutes of a driver and a bus, and that's really hard to accommodate. Um, so that's where we're trying to um, really see Mount Vernon kind of lighten up on the on-demand so that we can do the rest of the county. Um, cause that's, that's really more, and, and it's the kind of the outer edge of Mount Vernon. That's not, not serviced by the trips.
Your fees are.
Yeah.
On, on-demand fees, would, that depends on how far it is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So in Mount Vernon is a dollar. Uh, if you're kind of out the next circle, Frederic Town, Apple Valley, Howard, it's about three dollars. It's a three-dollar ride. And then the.
One-way, right?
One-way, each way, each way. And then the Danville, Centerburg, and the outer skirts of the county are five dollars each way. Uh, there is a fifty percent discount for seniors, students, people with disabilities. Um.
Veteran.
First responders and veterans. So, and it's a fifty percent. So then that three dollars becomes a dollar fifty. Um, the five dollars becomes two dollars.
The dollar becomes fifty cents. I'd like to have you guys pick me up more every morning at seven, six.
With the name. As long as I go to McDonald's. So, but the Mount, the Mount Vernon ride, rides are, are fixed routes are free.
Great. And then the Kenyon routes are, well, they, there's a contract with Kenyon, right?
Yes.
For, for that.
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed on, you know, on the, on-demand routes, uh, you don't break that down as to city and, and outside of the city. So.
Right. I could, I could break it down by per route, um, because there are different areas of the city. But um, I was just.
I've, I've been curious as to how much the city of Mount Vernon residents are putting on to ours, because um, that may be a discussion we wanna have with the city, um, powers to be about their support for the transit system.
And they did increase their support for transit this year in twenty twenty-five. They doubled the, the budget.
Yeah, and I think that's because they saw what was going on there, and that's, that's good.
Yes. Um, the other thing I wanted to highlight, uh, our new software pulls some new data, which is nice. Uh, it gives me unduplicated riders, meaning unique individuals. And this is just on-demand. In August, uh, we had four hundred eighty-four individuals. So we are reaching quite a few people in Knox County. That's, that's not the routes at all. So those are definitely unique individuals and the Kenyon students as well. So.
Think your new website's helping drive some of that maybe?
Yeah, I think so. We're um, more emails through the website, which I really, really like. We're getting great questions and um, being able to give some good feedback and getting some interest. So um, that's been really, really helpful as well.
So that four hundred eighty-four figure of unduplicated, that's people that in January through July had not been in their system?
That's just looking at the snapshot of August. If I polled it for the whole year, it would probably be, you know, six hundred, seven hundred, something like that, because it would be the same people riding each month and each day. So um, that was just the snapshot of.
Basically, unique riders.
Yes, unique riders.
Same person riding every day. That makes up some of the one thousand one hundred and forty, like the week of September eighth.
Right.
Eleven hundred and forty, but.
Right. So those are two trips usually, you know, they're going to work and back. It's almost, it's almost perfectly doing the math that way. Um, so, and we still continue to be very strong in our workforce transportation. Um, we're forty-five percent workforce transportation, which is amazing. But it's also really hard to make sure we're getting everyone to work on time, and that's another reason why our services are a little bit stretched because we've got to make sure that we hit, hit the time points for folks. So it's, it's all, it is very good, and we do have availability on the routes. I will say that over and over and over again. Go ride the routes. Um, it's just part of kind of the change and the growing. And this is where we knew we wanted to head. Um, so I just wanted to keep you updated on, on kind of the way that the change is going.
And definitely, once we really lock in, I know we're still kind of monitoring the spots, right? But once we kind of have that, are we gonna try to do signage at those pickup points? Is that kind of our goal?
Yeah. So I do have signs. I've been working with every stop to ask if they would be okay with me putting them up. So there are still some property managers that still haven't gone back with me or do not want to put a sign up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, you know, that's maybe just more conversations or um, working with them. I I have met with Walmart. I've been there three times. I met with the manager. They have the sign. They even expressed interest in a bus shelter, and I still don't see the sign up. So it just is another thing for me to follow up on as well. Um, you know, at this point, we are, again, we are trying to do as much as we can with less. So my time is very very stretched, and it's all about prioritization. So um, going, making another round at all of those stops has not not happened yet. So, um, but yes, hopefully, um, I'd like to see a few more bus shelters up too. I'm working with maybe the Hoover Plaza as well. Um, and I think KCH had also expressed interest in that as well. So it would be good to get some of these up to have places for folks to um, sit and wait. And that has been one of the, I think, legitimate concerns that writers have voiced is that, you know, at the transfer station, it's a little bit of a construction zone right now. So that's a little weird. And just any of these places, if there's not a natural sheltered place to wait, it is difficult to wait at a stop.
Well, that, and I don't think people realize that you are gonna have a new transfer station there because it currently looks like a, a warehouse with nothing out front.
And we do wanna put a bus shelter there, but we're.
I mean, there.
Until some of that gets.
Yeah, well, has to be there. But saying right now, you, if you pull down there, you're like.
Right, exactly. So, you know, we're trying to work on, we've put some chairs out, but it's, it's how do you make it welcoming, safe, friendly shelter, right? That's what you want people to feel um, when they're going to the bus stops. So we definitely haven't reached that mark yet, but um, it has not been something that I've been able to get back to at this point. So, and we also.
Company never figured that.
That's what I'm thinking. Yeah.
All the wind and.
Yes. Sunlight's been, yeah, there's trees and all that, but it's probably, you know, we've probably got a month or two before we really said, get something for people. So. Um, the other thing that I wanted to update you on, I, I gave the state fiscal year twenty twenty-five totals. Um, this is kind of the snapshot from like an ODOT perspective, and that's a little bit more how I think of my budget because they're the ones funding me. Um, so if you look at VIP in our county, it runs on a different year. And I, it doesn't always give you the, this snapshot. So I just wanted to make sure that you had this snapshot in front. This is more of a a year um, summary. I have two different budgets. I have two different grants. So one is for operations and one is for maintenance. Um, so I know we had also, we had talked about how, you know, how much is it costing to do all the maintenance on these buses? So I, that's why I wanted to kind of separate that out. It is a grant that is uh, reimbursed at eighty percent. And uh, if you look at it, we did contracted services for twenty-six thousand, and our parts were about thirty-six thousand. And the rest was just wages and benefits for my mechanic and my detailer. So um, the total for the whole year was a hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars, roughly. Um, and as far as local revenue for that, it was about thirty-one thousand that went to pay for that for the entire year. So the rest of it was covered in the federal funds.
So the locals, the twenty percent?
Yes, yes. And so I used a little bit of contract revenue, and then I use just local government funding for that. Um, so I think that's a pretty good deal for, you know, thirty buses to be completely maintained and up and running and serving our community. Um, that's a pretty good investment there.
I, I think we, I asked you last time, how's the age of your fleet and the condition of them? Does that start to turn into a?
Yes. Um, I think I have about six vehicles that I just never know, you know. I mean, they're all right now, but you know, that that class of them, that age, the transmissions are starting to go. And then, of course, once the transmission goes, that's really expensive. So then is it worth it?
Bethany, what's, what's the mileage before we can basically solve, examine, or let us buy another vehicle? Is it a hundred fifty?
Hundred fifty for the buses. And then what we learned sadly is that it's a hundred thirty thousand for the vans. We thought it was a hundred thousand, so we were getting ready to get rid of a van, and it's right in between a hundred and a hundred thirty thousand. So we are trying to get those on the road as much as.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the, the way you guys drive them's hard on cars, because it starts, stops, starts, stops.
Yeah.
Never really, you know, moving. Yeah.
Yeah. I, we put one of them on um, one of our routes that isn't as busy, but that, you know, it's like, yeah, that's really not that many miles, because it's just circling and down. But um, it's something, right? You know, it's something, and it's a van. So, um, yes, we do have, we have about six vehicles that really probably should have been gone by now. So um, we're trying, and I'm trying to shift us to using the newer and not use those because they were still being heavily u- used this summer. So, uh, you know, they've, they've already got their mileage, and they're probably about on their last leg anyway. Let's use them as our spares and get the usage on some planning.
Do we have any new ones we're waiting on delivery?
Yes, I have one that I, one more that I've ordered. Um, I don't think it will come in by the end of the year because I think the order was placed April. So I, I probably won't come in by the end of the year.
So it takes six months to get one?
Nine to twelve.
Twelve, twelve.
Yeah, yeah, six. Yeah, nine to twelve.
Uh.
Yeah.
Use your services.
Yeah. So, um, and then the other, the other budget, I included the operations budget just to show kind of the breakdown of what we're paying for as well. Um, the main point being that we're paying for people. We have wages and the benefits. And um, what we offer is a service that people are offering, so we have to pay the wages and the benefits for that. So, um, you know, when we're looking at budget cuts and, and all of that, you can't, obviously, we always look at utilities or supplies, but they are such a small, small, small percentage of our budget. Um, i- it's usually gonna be focusing on wages, benefits, staffing levels.
Yeah.
Um, because that is just, that's where it goes. So as a reminder, it was a, it was a twelve point five percent cut that we received for this, this fiscal year. So that's where we're just trying to scale back. Um, there were three driver positions that I didn't fill purposefully, but I do, I do actually have two full-time driver positions open right now. So we would like to see one or two other drivers um, added to the fleet. Um, and then uh, um, same with the dispatch, we decided to downsize how many people we have in there. Um, so you might hear people say that they have a hard time getting through on the phones. They have, especially in the last two months, because we have been training, we've been hiring and training people. So, um, uh, the new staff is fantastic, and they're doing a great job. And so we are back up and running to pretty normal levels. Um, but, you know, in all of that time, though, it did also help our budget to be that huge. So.
What's the tax rebate?
Yes. So we get a fuel tax rebate because the way we do our fuel is just through, um, we do marathon credit cards, and we pay at the pub. So there's taxes there. So then we have to file with the state
Okay.
to get the rebate back. So it, it comes off the budget and it kind of, you know, it, it I, I included it just so it all balanced out because it's like, that's the way that we're not seasoned.
Yeah, it's like.
They make you sometimes.
Pushing and out, yeah.
So I didn't want my expenses to be more than the revenue. So I just wanted to show you how it balances. Because they uh, they take that off. So, which, you know, makes sense.
So with, with the two uh, sheets here, then we're right around two and a half million dollars
Mm-hmm.
for, for operations.
Yes, yes. So to get cut down to two million is a little sticky, but we're making it do, you know, we're, we're making it work. Um, I guess, yes.
I think the people in the community just don't realize how expensive it is to do this operation. Um, so it would be good for them to be aware that this is a, a huge benefit to, to them. And uh, they're not paying through uh, o- other taxes. And so it's, it's a good thing. Any rumors in the wind of what might be coming down the as far as monies go?
Oh, no, no.
No rumors, huh?
They never tell me either. So, um, I mean, I would expect less.
Yeah.
But that's just a wind. I don't know, rumor in the wind. I don't.
That's the part that when it gets, it's all like to replace buses.
Yeah.
We've gotta come up with the match.
Twenty percent, you said, right?
Yes, and those buses, the price of those buses have skyrocketed. So obviously, our twenty percent match has gone up a lot. So that's the part operationally, you might be able to cut and do some things to operate, but then when you're talking about replacing buses, that becomes almost impossible.
Yeah, yeah. Well, certainly.
We talked before, unless you're gonna get rid of three buses to replace one. But that's, that's the only alternative, because we do get the proceeds of the sale of the buses once they hit the mileage limit.
Yeah, and unfortunately, one, since in the last month, one of our transmissions has gone down on one of the larger buses. So we will be selling them. But in the condition that, and we'll probably get twenty-five hundred, maybe three thousand dollars. You know, I mean, it's not gonna, it's not even gonna bring in that ten because we're gonna have to get the transmission repaired. So, um, that's the thing with having the older fleet and selling them as they're.
What do you, put them on an auction site?
Yes. We do go.
Deals.
Yeah. And there are people out there that buy them. We've had people from out of state come get them and spend.
Yeah, new ones cost a lot more than that.
Well, yeah.
And they can, they can fix the transmission themselves.
Exactly, exactly. It's a great deal. Or people, if they wanna make a camper out of it or whatever. So, you know, so.
They'll get a bus.
Yeah.
Or demolition bus at the Knox County.
Yeah.
Too bad.
Rumors that well, yeah, Knox County. What driver do you wanna have this year's come to?
So, so, yeah, things are going well. Um, yeah, we're kind of in this transition phase with these routes. And um, yeah, so I just wanted to make you aware of what's going on and some of the things that you might be hearing as you're going to meetings. And um, that we are giving our best to address. We really are trying to do as many trips as possible. We hate denying. So please be reasonable and kind if you get a denial. It's so.
You still have the evening employer.
We do, we do. We have one bus going, and that still has about twenty-four trips a night, which is, which is just, it's booked, you know. So um, it would be great to add a second one. My, you know, we will, we will have to see. I'm still um, making my way towards getting some of those sponsorships and at least those meetings. So it's just getting on people's schedules.
The hours for that bus?
Yes, it goes till one AM, so seven PM to one AM.
And they just, they call, schedule?
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same call and schedule. Um, and also just even if I, you know, I say it's booked, but if we're already at that location, we can probably squeeze somebody in if we're already at Walmart or CNO, America, or something like that. So it's always best to call just to see if we can get you in.
So that's employment rides at late for the most part?
Yep. And then, and then some of the um, nighttime releases from the hospital.
Sure.
Because it was no transportation for that.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. So that's been great to kind of meet both of those needs that were big problems for a while um, in the community. So we're really happy that we can offer that.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna try and have that.
So next we have like.
Look at that.
Our HR report, and Courtney is, is, is with us.
How are you, man?
Fantastic. How are you doing?
Good, thank you.
Good. My apologies if I didn't get this to Penny for your package. So. I got one, you got one. Everything is very good. Here you go, my friend. Thank you. Wow. So I've been at the office a little bit. And bring a board.
Ta-da.
Ta-da. So some handwritten notes as well. Uh, thanks so much for having me as all day. So some of the things that we've been doing lately or going to be doing, uh, Andrea Sellers and I, HR Coordinator Andrea, uh, we went to a two-day intensive ADA boot camp last week in Dublin, Tuesday and Wednesday. Uh, Rachel Shaw from Shaw Consulting, she's, um, she's literally written the book on the ADA and how to practically apply that in the workplace. She was our trainer, and we came out of there with workbooks about that thick. Um, and to help us with the intersection of the Americans Disabilities Act, FMLA, and workers comp, and how all those things can uh, come to come together at the same time and how we manage those kinds of cases. It was wonderful. Um, and we got, we came back with lots of templates and things like that, that I'm sure I'll be. Um, and we got, we came back with lots of templates and things like that, that I'm sure I'll be. Sharing with Chip to see if we can implement some of those in our practices. As well, so thank you for allowing us to attend. Um, tomorrow is the Career Quest event at Mount Vernon High School Energy Fieldhouse. So we'll be seeing, you know, a couple thousand of our favorite high schoolers from around the county, talking about the kinds of careers that we have here. At Knox County and inviting them to learn more about what we do. Um, we have some volunteers from both IT and the dog shelter who will be helping out HR with that. Uh, one thing we learned from last year, wear comfortable shoes, it was a, it was a long day on our feet, but that's okay. Um, and then next week, uh, the eighth, I'll be going to. OSU COTC in Newark, they're having a career fair, so talking to them about the opportunities we have with students. And enticing them to come this way. Corsa will be here on October twenty-third, and that should be on your calendars for our annual HR training. And notice has gone out already to elected officials and department heads, but I'll be reminding them that eighty percent. Um, of those folks need to be attending so we can get that, um, nice break off our force of renewal. Uh, I'll be attending the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services Directors Association New Director Training, I'm on a panel. With uh, two other HR professionals from around the state to talk to them. About what we do and answer questions just in general about human resources at the county level. And then we'll also be attending the Chambers HR Summit at the end of the month. We're always happy to, to do that and support the Chamber, they provide great information, both for private. And public sector employees. Let's see, uh, this week on Thursday, we have our county health fair from eleven to two. So we invite all of our employees to come out for that. We're gonna have a lot of vendors and representatives there, including from. Uh, OPRS, so if folks have questions about their retirement. Or uh, the deferred compensation programs, as well as of course, SEPCO. Delta Dental, Smart Shopper, things of that nature. We're gonna be hosting open enrollment meetings in October on the fourteenth and the fifteenth. Several will be in the second floor conference room, but we'll also be uh, coming out to the sheriff's office and the health department, so. That we can talk to the staff on site about. You know, medical benefits and open enrollment for next year. And we're also excited, we've announced um, supplemental additions will be available to all staff in twenty-twenty-six through AFLAC. So that information was sent out to staff last week. They're gonna be able to choose from quite a few different supplements if they want to cancer. Specified disease insurance, disability, accident, critical illness, hospital indemnity, and that'll also be our life independent life. Providers going forward, um, and employees will be able to.
When you save life, is the group life?
Correct, yes.
And that's a saving instead of counting, yeah, switching over that.
Yeah.
You saved a little bit of money doing that.
So employees will be able to choose kind of the level of dependent coverage, right now it's a static amount. That they could choose for a spouse or a dependent, and they'll be able to, you know, choose different ranges if they want. Additional above what we've offered in the past to them, so we're excited about that, and AFLAC will be at the health fair on Thursday. And as well as the open enrollment meetings on the fourteenth and fifteenth, and then they will be onsite. The two weeks of open enrollment in November to assist employees in getting enrolled in those benefits. Um, it's a great partnership, because they're gonna be doing a lot of the heavy lifting with enrollment. And going forward, we'll be able to access internally a portal to get those folks set up.
So we're gonna do that on a pre-tax basis on those people sending them?
Yes, they'll, they'll have an option um, for a few of the insurances, they'll be able to choose either pre-tax or after-tax. Um, so yes, they, they will be, and we'll be working on AFLAC. We'll be working with AFLAC, excuse me, to update our cafeteria plan, that's the plan that covers that pre-tax, after-tax. Program, so we're working with them to update that document as well.
Yeah, I know that um, the songs of people understand on the pre-tax, if they wanna cancel the health, that has to.
Yes, that has to be done during a, a life event going forward, right?
Yes.
Um, so you have to have, you know, an addition to your family or, you know, a subtraction to your family in order to make those changes. If you choose the pre-tax option. Yeah, and those benefits counselors that'll be onsite will be able to answer all of those questions for employees. Cause they're gonna be working with them directly one-on-one to do the enrollment. Questions or concerns about that? Nope. Um, let's see, our wellness program, the county's wellness program, I. Pam sent out an email, we had eighty-eight employees complete the county's wellness program, so that means. That they attended their yearly checkup with their doctor, they got their blood work, which included a cholesterol test, and they went online. To either anthem.com or the Sydney app and completed the online health assessment. Now, again, we don't get the data on any of those screens or the health assessment, all we know is that so-and-so. Took that box and completed that activity, so the eighty-eight this year, we had fifty-four last year, so that's a sixty-three percent increase.
It's, Pam's doing a good job really pushing that, and it's, it's grim, so that's been positive, yes.
We appreciate uh, SEPCO offering us those uh, wellness dollars and, and programming help. For that, so. It's gonna be the same status quo for next year, um, and the wellness year runs July first through June thirtieth. I suspect that they may be making some changes to the wellness program going forward, but. Um, we'll just have to wait and see. The SEPCO Reward Two Hundred program, that's separate from the county's wellness program, but. If employees complete certain activities, they can earn dollars um, towards virtual. Or electronic gift cards for completing wellness activities, and today, September thirtieth is, is the last day for employees to re. Redeem those SEPCO rewards, so just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, and Pam has been. Uh, communicating that deadline uh, a lot, so hopefully folks who have that in their, um. In their app have downloaded those reward dollars. Uh, as you've seen, hopefully, the preparedness month activities, I sent out an email once a week. Uh, this month encouraging employees to um, participate in some activities around preparedness. Um, severe weather, tornado, fire, and this week I asked. Since it was only two days, simply to update their emergency contact information, so we make sure that we have. Uh, the most accurate information, if something is to happen, we can check that file.
And I did take mine delivered mine, so at least have.
Well, I love it, I did mine this morning, so we have two at least. So, uh, let's see, defensive driving, Andrea has an onsite class set up on October seventeenth at the Memorial Building. So in addition to the one-hour Corsa online training that we push out to all new hires, we encourage. Uh, especially new hires to attend the longer, a little more intensive. Um, onsite class and anyone who wants a refresher, we invite them to participate as well.
So is that the one?
Very, yes. Fantastic.
I thought it was upstairs in that room, so it's over.
It's gonna be in the memorial building.
Always discipline, we're not actually driving cars.
There's, I know, no, we don't have a simulator, but uh, maybe that's something we can work on in the future, I don't know. Um, active recruitment, so, um, these are the jobs that are posted on the website. Um, however, we also have that are not listed there, executive assistant and. Um, full-time and part-time drivers for Knox Area Transit, excuse me, Knox County Transit. I'll get it one of these days, sorry about that, we need both CDL and non-CDL drivers, as I'm sure Bethany. Uh, talked about earlier, engineer's office is still looking for some highway workers and mechanics. If you're interested in being a cook, we need one at our jail, so uh, reach out, we have applications online for that. Probate Juvenile Court is looking for a deputy clerk, and the Veteran Service Office is also looking for part-time drivers. So I added those while I was sitting out in the hallway, my apologies that they're not on your list. All of those postings can be found on the county's website, so we encourage the public, if they're looking for opportunities to join our team. To please go to the county's website to apply for that, or they can reach out to the Human Resources Office, and we can help them with applications. Um, and take their resumes and things like that. Um, for the past month, I listed there the application sources by engagement, again, indeed. Is where we are sourcing most of our applications, county website is right behind that, uh, and then Ohio Means Jobs, social media. Uh, even word of mouth, so we appreciate folks talking about our physicians and. Uh, we did four interviews in the last month, onboarded eight, offboarded nine. We are currently monitoring twenty FMLA cases, which is down four from last month, so that's nice. And I think that's about it. Questions, concerns, ideas, things we can be working on, let's go.
But know that on the employee fair that you're having, that's, that's a good thing, cause uh. Um, you can't remind people too many times about what they should be doing and need to ask those questions. And so I appreciate you putting that together.
Yes.
For them.
Uh, Pam has worked very hard to, to bring all of those folks together, uh, for employees to be able to ask questions. And the health department will be there, so if anyone is needing a, a flu shot or other vaccines, they'll have some. Uh, I think have A and B and COVID shots, things of that nature, so if employees are needing those, they can get that.
Um, over there.
At, for there, on Thursday, yeah.
Yeah. And there's even door prices.
There are, yes.
Then.
That we use the wellness stuff from SEPCO to um, provide those door prices for the employees, so that's not. Coming out of the county's budget, but um, yeah, a little incentive for folks to get over there to participate. Hey, oh, I also wanted to say thank you again to the, to the commissioners for the Viking tables that we've put in out there, I don't know if you've noticed.
Over here.
Yeah, but over here, uh, but they are being, being used uh, by.
I've seen people waiting lunch there.
Yeah, and so thank you again for uh, allowing us to do that, that's been a great addition, I think, so.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Courtney.
So welcome.
All these years, have you ever wanted doors at one of those? You want a door?
All right, well, we have a few resolutions for you today, we have approved the State of Ohio Office of Community Development. They're all requests, number seven for Martinsburg Water Improvement Project, an amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Motion to approve.
Those favor say aye.
All right, Phil signature, and then we have another draw request. Uh, number eleven for C, uh, CDBG Martinsburg Water Improvement, amount of one hundred thousand per KN excavating.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those supporters say aye.
Aye.
And those are the draw requests, and then we have an application for payment to KN excavation. For the Martinsburg Water Improvement Project in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve. So Jason, can we back up for one sec? Why do we have, why is it number seven and number eleven, is there a reason?
It's the way they, which, draw they come out, some of them come out of admin, some of them, uh, objects, it depends.
Where the money's coming from?
He needs full of the money out, so.
Okay, gotcha.
Critical infrastructure grant is the grant from allocation grant, and it depends on which one.
Okay.
What order.
You catch, Commissioner. In fact, we're discussing it. All right, we have a final wage affidavit report for Martinsburg Water System Improved uh, project as of August thirtieth. Twenty twenty-five, and this is for the critical infrastructure grants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favors, yeah.
And we've got several utilities from it, so we're through here, we have Mercury Broadband being on Gilchrist Road and Road Township.
The fiber. Motion to approve.
All those favors say aye.
Okay, we have another one for Mercury Broadband on Gilchrist Road and Road, but for fiber.
Second.
Those favors say aye.
Aye.
Mercury Broadband, Gilchrist Road, and Road Township.
Motion to approve.
All those favors say aye.
We run a lot of fiber. For Mercury Broadband and Gilchrist Road.
Second.
Those favors say aye.
And one last one. Broadband, and this is on Old Main Hill Road in Norris Township, fiber.
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Uh, and then we do have a one ad, uh, came down from the auditor, so just a completion of the mid-year budget. He had already approved everything back in July, sent it to the auditor, and this is. It's an acceptance of the rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and there's nothing due to sign, but you just need to adopt these. Rates and that, since the mid-year budget process.
Motion to approve.
A second.
All those favors say aye.
And we have uh, the set of minutes, and you've got your bills. Um, and then one note, so Thursday, you'll see on the bill list, we are set to formally acquire the property. For transit and the county down there, the, the warehouse, so that's ready to go, the demo's all done, so we're ready to. Transfer that to the county, um, so that transfer will happen. But you'll, you'll sign that on Thursday on the bill list, and then the trader will wire the money to Hartman's title. And I believe on schedule to go sign all the closing documents Monday, and that will complete that transaction.
And that, in the land, the two properties we had.
And we're, that's already, that's already, and then we're getting that credit towards on purchase.
Good.
So that, I think, is set for signing Monday, you'll sign the bills, transfers. That to release the wire on Thursday.
And do you have any update on our, the back, cause I know I'll be asking that all the time, on our, um. We get the big crane, so maybe Halloween.
I think uh, the concrete company is scheduled to be here at four. The week of the twentieth, is what I was saying, about. So barring weather and. The panel should be done this week. And then hopefully, next week is kind of wrap up. When you know, there's some touch-up painting, and he's done inside, they've got a clean inside. They've got to freshenize the sprinkler system inside the building, so those kind of things, that's scheduled for Columbus Day. When the building's pretty much closed.
Yeah.
Um, they're gonna do that, and I believe Modern said, yes, the week of the twentieth is. Scheduled for, I think the rest of the week of the thirteenth, they gotta get somebody in here. And clean up the site level and all, get it ready for concrete, and then for, for the twentieth, that's the plan. Nothing to change.
Good. Um, Barry, you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you, Commissioner.
Well, you're gonna go out tomorrow to the.
Fair, Fair Board, well, yeah, Career Quest and Fair Board tomorrow night.
Yeah. We should, Nathan?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so then, uh, yeah, it was mentioned about the career quest, you know, eighth graders and tenth graders. From all the county schools will be there out to Field House, and that starts at eight, it goes to two thirty. Um, and there's all kinds of companies out there, and as Courtney mentioned, we're, we're good tennis shoes, if you're one of their. Um, providers out there, I think they had about sixty companies last year out there. Um, for all the, you know, students to, to go to, and I was looking at the um, uh, Knox County Center. Um, on YouTube, Knox County, yeah, Knox County Career Center, two thousand twenty-four Career Quest Day. Had um, a person from Kukosi, had a student on um, um, one of their. Uh. Excavators with uh, yeah, um, uh, bowling ball set up. And they had them trying to knock the bowling ball down. It's a lot of hands-on stuff, ODNR was there with felt, so it's, it's a good experience. It's a lot of hands-on stuff, ODNR was there with health, so it's, it's a good experience. Um, yes, so if there's nothing else, I'll call for it.
Second.
And we say it, everyone have a good.